All right, welcome everybody.
I don't want to do that.
I don't think the mic's on.
No, it is. Hello?
It's on.
Hello, everybody?
You can gamble.
I know. I haven't gambled before in my life. Do you want me to do that, eh? All right, I'll gamble.
You've been waiting for me to do that.
All right, welcome everybody. Going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Today is the regular meeting of the Edina School Board, December 16th, 2019. If I could ask the superintendent to just do a quick overview of the agenda for us, that would be great.
So, the meeting tonight will have recognition of students and programs. We will have hearings from members of the audience, truth and taxation presentation, a series of consent items, and then in discussion, we'll have the presentation of the LEC Legislative Platform, review of five policies, and then under action, we will approve the 2021-21-22 school calendars. We'll approve the final tax levy certification, approve the removal of asbestos, ECC asbestos, and mechanical bids will also be approved under action. We also will be approving interactive whiteboards and some audiovisual installation, and approving Policies 532, 624, 711, and 720. So that's the meeting.
All right, thank you. The first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Ellen, did you have a motion you wanted to make regarding the minutes before we get them all moved together?
Yeah, I'd like to pull off the November 18 regular meeting minutes, please.
So you're bringing a motion to address November 18 separately?
Right.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any questions? Otherwise, all in favor of moving November 18 to a separate motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the November 18 closed meeting, the December 2 work session, and the December 9 special enclosed meeting?
So moved.
Any questions or changes on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the November 18 closed meeting, December 2 work session, and December 9 special enclosed meeting, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the November 18 regular meeting?
So moved.
Any questions or changes to those minutes?
Yes. I'd like to just make a comment that I don't feel that those minutes reflect the meeting. I feel that they were imbalanced, and so I'm just making that comment that I can't approve them as written.
And did you have a particular change you wanted to make to them?
No.
Any other questions regarding those minutes? And so, Sarah, having approved the prior motion quickly, do we now need to go back to the... To do a roll call on the minutes? So let's go, let's do the November 18, and we'll go back to the other ones. So November 18, all those, so we'll do a roll call on approving the November 18 meetings. Yes, the November 18 regular meeting, the current motion that's pending. So, aye or nay? Yes. You're approving the minutes. It's a roll call.
Aye.
Curry?
Aye.
Jones? Michelson?
Nay.
Assaw?
Nay.
Valen Freeman?
Aye. Motion carried. Now, we're going to actually go back to the other minutes for a roll call. So can I get a renewed motion to approve the November 18 closed meeting, December 2 work session, and the December 9 special enclosed meeting? And now we'll do a roll call.
Okay. Albert?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Argy?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Assaw?
Aye.
Valen Freeman?
Aye. Motion carried. All right, we are on to recognitions. It's kind of a fun part of the evening. First up is Southview Middle School Trailblazer Award for Personalized Learning. Presenter Randy Smazl. Test. Here we go. We are so excited, Southview staff and students. Get down here. We can line up right in the front here, maybe facing the audience. We have Dr. Tim Anderson, Ryan Carlson, we have Dr. Tammy Jill Cook, Jonathan Haringa, Tricia Pettis, Kayla Liu, and some great students here to speak this evening, and these are recipients of the Trailblazing Personalized Learning Award. And it is the first time a school from Edina Public Schools has ever won this large award. And Dr. Anderson, can you give us a few words on what that word, what that award is about?
Thank you, Dr. Smazl, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, Board members, members of the audience. It's a pleasure to be here and just spend some time, brief though it may be, sharing about some of the amazing work that the staff and these students do on a daily basis, and we're humbled by this award. The Institute for Personalized Learning annually convenes educators from across the country to recognize, share, and study emerging effective and best practices in the field of education. And so this fall, on October 8th and 9th, our small team on behalf of Southview accepted the Trailblazer Award. And the Trailblazer Award recognizes leadership in forging a path for others, in personalizing and meeting students' needs. So I'm just so pleased to have this wonderful group of people here to represent that. And look at them. Aren't they amazing, just looking at them?
Mr. Carlson, can you speak to how this has impacted the culture inside of Southview Middle School?
Yeah, I would say it's had a significant positive impact on our culture. It's just exciting to see students, and they are thriving on having more agency over their learning. Staff have talked about just being re-energized and just excited about the process and the journey. We do student and staff surveys, and those surveys indicate that there's a lot of buy-in for what we're doing. Over 90% of students and over 90% of staff believe that the things we're doing, including flexible pacing with our daily flex, have had a significant positive impact on student learning. So that type of buy-in really helps just with the positive culture and climate in the school building.
Thank you, Ryan. And Dr. Cook, could you speak to how it has impacted student leadership?
Absolutely. So before we worked with personalization, we had kind of what you would experience as a traditional student council with about 20 to 25 students on it, planning a couple parties a year. And it's now transformed through personalized pathways to become almost 300 students with eight different leadership teams really around passion areas for students to really grow their leadership skills. And they keep bringing more and more stuff to us every day. So they make us very proud, and we really feel like it's had a positive impact in our building in terms of growing leaders.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Tricia Pettis and Kayla Liu work as coaches with teachers around personalization efforts. Tricia, can you tell us a little bit about what that's like?
Yes, I'm going to speak on behalf of both of us. So personalized learning has created systems that allow teachers and learners to be responsive. So we help coach teacher, or coach teachers on how to rethink instructional time that allows for multiple pathways, pathways that include getting kids more support when they need support, extensions, and also rigorous challenges. We feel that in order to be responsive, teachers have to be really intentional with their feedback. So we feel like we've improved our feedback practices. And finally, our students set daily goals and reflect to develop agency, and they also feel connected and validated by their teachers.
Thank you, Tricia. Now Jonathan, you've had an opportunity to work with these coaches. How has it impacted your teaching?
Thank you. Personalized learning has made me more intentional in my practice by thinking about how to better serve learners who pace faster and slower. I have made better systems and structures for all learners, whether it's be through pacing guides or better formative assessments. I have worked more with specialists like our PL coaches and our special ed team to design better assessments and better unit materials. It has made me more proactive before units start, being able to anticipate student needs and be, have a plan for them, and be more reactive during the unit. So I can modify instruction based on student formative data. And the biggest impact it's made on my teaching is that it is helping me make the classroom that I theorized about as a new teacher. I'm wanting a classroom that is designed to help all students learn and grow as learners, and like it's helped me make that more of a reality in my room.
Okay, Kayla, how about you introduce our students who are here this evening? We want to add their voice to this space.
Right, we couldn't accept this award on behalf of our school without inviting the most critical resources in our building, and that's our learner voices. There's so many kids who would love this opportunity, and we're really excited to introduce Jaden, Lucia, Josh, and Ismail. They are just going to give a snapshot of what it's like to be a learner at Southview Middle School.
Hi, my name's Jaden. I'm in 8th grade at Southview. I've been going since 6th grade. When you start out the day at Southview, it's a whole process of learning and growing yourself and helping your peers grow. You have a lot of choices, and the community is incredible. Everybody is there for each other. Everybody is trying to help you grow and make yourself better.
Yeah, and those choices that you do get with learning, it helps me learn myself as a learner, which before I wasn't able to do. And the subjects that we have in school, while the curriculum is super important for us, not all of that translates to our life after college. And, but knowing how I learn best, what topics I need more support on, and just knowing how I need to be studying in that, and if I should pace faster or slower in certain subjects, translates through your entire life. And Southview is giving me that opportunity to learn that now.
What I think really speaks like loads about teachers at Southview is that like they're very, they're much more concerned on if you get the material than the grade you achieve. There's still grades, though. I think what's really great is like my math teacher, well, like we can come in and like, I can just come in and talk about a topic instead of having to take a test. I may just come in and talk and say like, hey, I'm wanting to perfect well on this topic. Maybe I could talk with you, and I could raise my, redone that, and it's totally open to do so. I also feel like there's a big like SVMS family too, so like I think there's like a lot of your peers really look out for you.
Hi, I'm Ismail, and one thing I would like to add about how Southview makes us grow as a learner is it builds our responsibility. The reason why it builds our responsibility is through all the choice, is through all the choices we have, we need to be responsible on the outcomes that we desire. And for example, in math class, I can choose to work with my friends. I can choose to work alone, and that can build my responsibility because I do whatever seems best fit for me, which can make me successful. And so that's something that's really great about Southview is how it makes us responsible at such a young age.
Thank you. How about a huge round of applause for our learners? I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schultz, who has some certificates to hand out to... A certificate.
Yes, this is your certificate of commendation presented to Southview Middle School Trailblazer Award for Personalized Learning. Congratulations all. Thanks for your hard work. Thank you.
Troy?
Let's start with Swim and Dive. Girls Swim and Dive, come on up. All right, well, welcome, everybody. It's nice to have a full house here tonight, Southview. Great job. Congratulations to you. My name is Troy Stein. I'm the Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics at the high school, and certainly proud of my role and proud to be here this evening to recognize four teams that accomplish something that very few student athletes have the honor to be able to do. And we're proud to recognize, first off, our girls Swim and Dive. They were not only the late conference champions, the section champions, but also for the fourth year in a row, the state champions. So congratulations to them. Let's give them a round of applause here to start. I'm going to, I'm going to start with our amazing student athletes, and I'm going to pass, have you pass the mic along. And I'd like you to introduce yourself, let us know your grade. If you're a senior, we'd love to hear what your plans are, if you've narrowed that choice down and what you're thinking of doing next year.
All right, I'm Nora Klarkowski. I'm a senior, and I'll be swimming at University of Wisconsin-Madison next year.
Hi, I'm Katie McCarthy. I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Ally Burns, and I'll be swimming at Denison next year. Oh, I'm a senior, sorry.
Hi, I'm Carson Swanson. I'm a senior, and I am undecided.
Hi, I'm Katie Murphy. I'm also a senior, and I also do not know what I'm doing next year.
I'm Sophie Curran, and I'm a junior.
I'm Ella Hall, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Skylar Kiefer, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Lily Grummels, and I'm a junior.
So thank you, ladies, for coming tonight. With us are two of our coaches on the staff. Jeff Mace, our head coach, and Greg Pokorski, our assistant coach. Jeff, a former math teacher at the high school. Greg, a science/physics teacher at the high school. But Coach Mace, why don't you talk about this team a little bit? Talk about the season and how it went this year. Wasn't expecting that. The season started out, I mean, we had, what do we have, like 70 girls on the team? And we have about 65 that were swimming and five or six that were diving. The girls worked incredibly hard during the season, every day after school. We had meets that they won every single dual meet during the season. And the true team section meet, we did very well at true team. And they bonded well, and at the state meet, it was going to be close, and they knew it was going to be close. And these gals stepped up and really, really performed above and beyond the coaches' expectations as a team. It's not always about the individuals, but as a team, they performed very, very well. Well said, and I would echo going into that state meet, it was amazingly close meet, and these girls won it on day one at the preliminaries. And hats off to, you know, an amazing season, and it's been certainly fun. Poco, so you've coached a couple different schools and now teaching at the high school. Tell us, tell us a little bit your perspective of coaching here and coaching these fine student athletes.
So our program is unique in that we have a team that's large enough and facilities that accommodate us splitting where half the teams, coach, or trains at Southview and half the team trains at Valley View. And we split it by training speed, and so it's organized as if we had one 13-lane pool. It's great to have the ability for the different teams to have the different workouts that match their ability, the way to bond together as smaller units and then come together and bond together as larger units at the meets and at the big team events. It's, it's great to see that that separation of training doesn't, doesn't lead to separation among the teams, that they all still know each other, they still are behind each other. Everybody's cheering for everybody, and we have a great, a great community.
Well said. I echo that. So certificate of commendation to Edina Girls Swim and Dive. If we can have you all squeeze in tight, I'm going to put this in the center if somebody can hold that. And let's, let's get a nice photo with Mary right here. All right, let's give them another round of applause. All right, let's, girls tennis, come on up. So, another very strong and successful program. And again, we, we really work hard to not try and define success as winning state championships. We talk about growth, we talk about consistent improvement, and we do that with all our programs. And what is our purpose in playing? And there are some programs that have been extremely successful, both in that area, but also in competition. And this program has won the state title, and I know you'll correct me if I don't have this right, but this is the 22nd time in 23 years. Is that correct? That's amazing. So ladies, similar thing here. I want you to introduce yourself for us and pass the mic down, but I want you to talk about what it means to play tennis here at Edina. And introduce yourself, please.
Oh, gosh. All right. I'm Ingrid Smith. I'm a junior, and I've always, you know, ever since I was little playing tennis, been super excited and looked up to Steve and like players like Sophie Reddy, who have been playing for Edina forever. And it's such a huge legacy, and so it's such an honor to be able to play for it. And it's also a lot of pressure to continue to win. So yeah, it's great.
I'm Annie Clemmensen, and I'm a freshman. And kind of like what Ingrid said, I think just like the traditions are super cool and like seeing everyone playing like when I'm younger and looking up to them, and now I'm there. And that's just super cool opportunity.
I'm Nicholas Antoni. I'm also a freshman. And it just shows me that from growing up and playing tennis, and once you like are on a team for, I think, any sport, it just changes so much. And the community of like our tennis team just made me like realize how much I like love tennis even more, and all the opportunities it brought were really amazing.
I'm Morgan Clark. So I'm a junior, and playing on Edina Girls Tennis, there's no pressure. There's a lot. I mean, we've had a pretty good record and a legendary coach, so that helped. But it's just really fun, and yeah, so many amazing players.
Awesome. Well said, and you can, you can feel that sense of responsibility that they carry with them. Coach Paulson, who has been with the program 28 years and has retired this fall with over 600 wins and 17 defeats in that span. An amazing career, an amazing record, an amazing person, which is most impressive of all. And it's certainly been my honor to get to know you and work with you. And so this was your last season, and you, you made that known before the state tournament. Tell us a little bit about the decision to announce that and reflect a little bit on your years, and then also, what do you, what do you think you're going to do next?
Wow. You guys have a couple hours? It's been a great, a great run, obviously, but the year, this year, was a little bit unique in that we had many teams that were really close to us, and we had very good matches throughout the year. Minnetoka, probably our closest rival, if you will, had two very good matches with them up until the state tournament. And it's just so rewarding and special to see these kids, like the Swim and Dive team, come through at the state tournament. I think they love to be there, and they play their best tennis there. And we end up winning 5-2 in the state tournament. Really showed the strength of our team, winning. Ingrid was one of the best singles players on our team. And then the strength of our team, along with our top singles players, we had all three doubles won in straight sets in the, in the finals, which was super, super cool. Over the years, I'm just astounded by the amount of support we get. I want to say thank you to Troy for all of his years. He's kind of behind the scenes. He comes to a lot of our matches, supports us any way he can. So I want to say thank you to Troy and, and the community around. So it's unbelievable, the support we get, and great, great memories of, actually started in 88, so it's been, you know, 30-some years. I had the boys team for five years before I had the girls. So it's been really special to see a lot of the kids coming back for our banquet and even the well wishers through all the social media. So I thank all those guys for that as well.
Well, and we are super appreciative of everything you've given to all of our student athletes in both programs here at Edina High School, so thank you. How about a nice huge round of applause for, for Coach and the girls? And we're going to photo right there. Boy soccer! All right, so our boy soccer team went undefeated this year at 22-0. And the piece that is remarkable from my perspective is going into the year, there was no talk about this team going on that type of run or that type of potential, at least on the outside. And they may have been talking about it as a team, and they certainly probably had some goals that they were trying to achieve, but there was no shining star that was returning that made people think, wow, Edina's really going to be strong, which I think is a tribute to the focus of this program and the, and the philosophy of team first and playing well together. And certainly a controlled tempo with that. So fellas, I'm going to, I'm going to, same thing here. I'm going to have you pass the mic through, and what I want you to do is introduce yourselves and tell us your grade. If you're, if you know where you're going to play college, certainly share that. But I also want you to share, what was it like, just quickly, playing at the state tournament at US Bank Stadium? So name, grade, US Bank Stadium or college?
Hello, I'm Valentin Corlejo. I'm a senior. I don't know where to go to college, and it was really stressful. I'd say.
I'm Coy Nguyen. I'm a sophomore, and, or not a sophomore, I'm a junior. I just remember getting out of the bus at the bank, and I saw the tunnel, and there's another team playing on the field, and I was like, dang, this is pretty sick.
I'm Tommy Broderick. I'm a junior, and I'd just say it's an opportunity that I'm going to be able to tell my kids, and yeah, it was a lot of fun.
I'm Sammy Prestiss. I'm a sophomore, and you know, it's just an awesome facility. So just getting in there, it's kind of hard to picture it, but you know, it's something I'll remember forever. So yeah, it was cool.
I'm Patrick McGarvey. I'm a junior, and I'd just say it was a really cool experience to play just under a huge stage, and it was really interesting to just be in the facility.
I'm Andy Ossen. I'm a freshman, and it was just all-around a great experience to be able to be in such a beautiful facility and be on such a great team.
My name's Shannon Burnham. I am a sophomore, and I would say that it was very big. It was also like super nice, so.
I'm Jack Watson. I'm a sophomore, and I remember looking up, and I saw like seats above me. I was like, man, this is pretty big.
My name is Christian. I'm a junior, and I was so excited to play. I just sat in, but I didn't play, so it was fine.
My name's Jack Turk. I'm a senior, undecided. You know, walking in there, you kind of walk on the field, and it's like you're walking at the same place where Stefan Diggs did the whole Minneapolis miracle and everything. And you also look in the crowd, and you see everyone who's watching you and supporting you, who came to actually watch you. And so it's just, it was crazy, and it was a lot of pressure, and ultimately it was the best day of, I think, most of our lives so far, you know, winning that state title.
I'm Matt Mason. I'm a junior. It was very stressful, especially with all the fans who had supporting us, but overall it was a great experience.
All right, well said, fellas. Thank you very much. Coach, head coach Dave Jensen, why don't you walk us through the season? And when did you start to think like this, this team might have enough to do it this year?
Wow. Maybe I'll just use my coaching voice, a little assistance. But you know, the season started out with 120-plus kids again through five levels. So we found 27 guys that we felt... So we found 27 guys that we felt were going to help us for this year, for the next year, and on and on. So we really felt comfortable with the group we had as a family, if you will. Every day, they trained hard, came every day to just be a team. I think most guys would say that. And again, this is only half of them. In fact, we had 27 players, so we've got just suspended tonight. So I'm sure Bill and I, over 34 years, weren't sure where we were going. But I think middle of the season, when we got, probably when we got to maybe 15 games, we were like, well, if we win one more, if we want to go somewhere, we've got to win the rest. So I think a lot of us, you know, started to think a little bit about that, but we didn't, the kids didn't talk about it. We just kept playing and training, and we battled injuries and weather, and, you know, there were a lot of challenges this year. So I think that's kind of where we're at, and I thought the stadium was just as big as the kids thought it was. So it was, you know, it was a true pleasure, and we're very proud to have been there.
And Bill Garner. So two things I want you to touch on. First off, this is your first year retired, full-time retirement from Minneapolis schools, so congratulations on that. And tell us a little bit about that experience of retirement and still coaching, and how your day was probably consumed with coaching. But also talk a little bit about how this team ranks. You guys have been coaching together for, what did you say, 30, 34 years? So talk us, talk a little bit about how this team ranks with some of the great ones in the past.
Well, I'll start with the 34 years teaching together, or coaching together, some 400-plus wins. I didn't know, and you know, most of us didn't know, if 22 is going to happen this year. I didn't actually realize how many people were paying attention. You brought that up earlier. The social media, all these texts and emails and stuff coming in, and I realized that they're all paying attention because they all want to know about my number 22 tattoo that I got when I got retired, and I thought I just need something different. So off I went, and lo and behold, we win 22 games this year. What was the second question, senior moment? Retirement is great. People ask, you know, are you still coaching? I said, of course I'm coaching because I coach Edina, I retired from Minneapolis. I suppose this year I must have had just a lot more energy to put into this group, and it worked out pretty good for us.
Well, that is really good for us. So let's squeeze all of you guys together for a picture. I'm going to have you hold the commendation in the middle. Let's squeeze in. There you go. All right, let's give them another round of applause. Last but not least. So we are on, in a historic run in terms of, if you measure it just purely on state titles. This is our 12th state title, fourth this fall, obviously, 12th in the last 15 months. And I think all of our coaches, as we talk, and we talk about this historic era we're in right now, is these athletes are so dedicated, and they're so passionate, and they have tremendous support and a network that goes beyond our school and it goes into our community. And I think we'll hear some of that from some of these girls. So this program, by the way, picked up its third state championship in the last five years, and third in program history. So a recent success in terms of those titles. Ladies, same deal here. I'm going to have you say a few words, but I'd like you to introduce yourself. And then what I'd like you to share is, what got you into running? What sparked that passion for you? Or what drives you on those tough days to still put in the distance and still put in that extra effort? Because we all know that to get to the level you're at, it takes tremendous training, tremendous effort and focus. So name, grade, and tell us a little bit about that passion behind your running.
My name's Evy Haig. I'm a junior, and what got me into running is my mom forced me to do it, but what kept me to stay is all these girls. We have so much fun every day, and they pushed me through all these runs.
Hi, my name is Sadie Schreiner. I'm a senior, and what got me into running was actually running the elementary school mile with Mr. Hahneman here at Normandale. And he said I should try out cross country, so I did, and I love it. And probably what gets me through is just like what Evy said, is running for my teammates and knowing that they're suffering just as much as me, so.
I'm Heidi Yangman. I'm a senior, and I started cross country because the captains came to lunch in sixth grade, and they said, "You should come do cross country." And I said, "Okay, sounds really fun." So I went out in seventh grade, and I loved it, and it was probably like the best decision that I made in middle school. And I run every day because of these girls. I love, I love coming to practice. I always have a lot of fun, and it's a great sport.
I'm Lauren Kosik, and I'm in ninth grade. And I always loved running in gym class, and my teacher told me I should do the elementary mile like Sadie said. So I did it, and I enjoyed it a lot. And so I started cross country. And then what keeps me going are these girls. And I, the highlight of my day is to come to practice.
I'm Maggie Wagner. I'm a sophomore. And I do cross, or I started cross country because my sister here did it, and I thought it'd be really fun because she made it look really fun. And just like everyone else said, and that'll probably be the same answer for everyone, but I keep doing it because I love everyone on the team, and I just want to do it for them.
I'm Claire Wagner. I'm her sister, and I'm a senior, so I'm her older sister. And I started cross country because both my parents ran in college, and so they made me do it too. But I stayed definitely because these girls are some of my best friends. So it's so much fun going to, sorry, going to practice.
Hi, I'm Morgan. I'm a senior, and I started running because I'd just go running with my dad around a loop by our house, and I liked to see how fast I could do it. And eventually, I'm like, I should start running more if I want to run this faster. So, and what motivates me to keep running is to just, to, you know, see what I can do and really push myself. And, you know, it's satisfying to know, to work for something and then get your goal. And if it doesn't happen, at least you know you tried.
My name's Macy Iyer. I'm a sophomore. I got into running because I come from a family of triathletes, and I just fell in love with it as I started to do more of those races. And I'll say it again, I keep coming back to cross country because I do love the running, but I love these girls more. They're like a second family, so that's why I keep coming back.
I'm Mary Valner. I'm in ninth grade. The reason I joined running was because my friends told me it was really fun. So I'm like, why not? So I just joined it. And then the reason I keep running is like all them said, is because of my teammates, and I made like such great friends on this team. And it's really fun knowing like that they're all there to support you when you're running.
That was super fun to listen to. And what always strikes me is the response, which can appear as a very individual sport, but they all refer back to team and teammates and that support network that they have. And I think a big part of that is Matt Gabrielson, our head coach here, who is also a teacher at Highlands Elementary. But Matt, you do such a great job of emphasizing that aspect, and you do a wonderful job of talking about purpose and growth. Tell us a little bit about this team and your relationship with them, and talk about the year for us.
Well, I guess to start, I just, I feel deeply honored to be a part of this community and to lead these girls in their cross-country endeavors. I would say, I think it's just Edina in general, honestly, the community at large, Highlands Elementary, that the cornerstone is building deep and meaningful relationships. Sorry if I get a little emotional. Deep and meaningful relationships. You have that, and you have a lot of things that can happen that are good, as you can see. And these girls are like my own kids. They know my kids, they know my wife, and we just work on not doing it for ourselves but for each other, and the other 110 girls on the team that are working just as hard. Distance running is not just about going out and doing a five-mile run for the heck of it. There's a lot of, just like life, there's a lot of timing that goes into it, and a lot of growth mindset development, and also just a lot of good old-fashioned grit that it takes to be successful with it. And we try to time things appropriately, and this year we did it spectacularly at the end of the season and won state championship. It was amazing, and I'm just always be thankful for being a part of the program.
Well said. Hey, let's give them a big round of applause. And ladies, why don't you squeeze in tight so we can get a group picture? All right, well, thank you very much, ladies. Thanks for coming. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, well, that's a really pretty hard act to follow here. So let's give one more round of applause for the four state champions and for Southview. So we do have a couple of school board members that are retiring from the school board tonight. It'll be their last meeting. And so the first one is Amir Garbi. So if Amir could stand up over here, please. So the board expresses its sincere appreciation and that of the staff and residents of the school district for your four years of devoted service to the Edina Public Schools and its work during the years 2016 through 2019. During his tenure, Amir served diligently the district as the assistant clerk, assistant treasurer. He also served as a member of the board's policy, finance, meet and confer committees, as well as liaison to the Edina Park Board. Amir has been the board's liaison to Southview Middle School, Early Childhood Special Education, and the Early Learning Center. And understand, he also worked full-time during this time period. The board thanks Amir for his years of service, noting especially his efforts on the board policy committee. He's been a thoughtful and dedicated board member. He's continually based his decisions on what is best for the students and our community. We congratulate you and extend a collective and individual thank you for a job well done. Thank you, Amir. We've got a plug. As with Amir, the board expresses our sincere appreciation and that of the staff and residents of the school district for your eight years of devoted service to the Edina Public Schools and its work during the years 2012 through 2019. During your tenure, Sarah Patzloff has diligently served the district as both assistant clerk, clerk, and vice chair. She's also served as a member of the board's Finance and Facilities Committee, Human Resources, Teaching and Learning, and Joint Policy Committees. She served as board liaison to the Minnesota State High School League, the Community Education Service Advisory Council, the Insurance Committee, the Parent Leadership Council, the Communications Ad Hoc Committee, the District Equity Advisory Council, the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee, the Students Activity Advisory Committee, and by the way, that one meets at seven in the morning, and the World's Best Workforce Committee. She has also been on the board's liaison to Cornelia Elementary, Southview Middle School, Concord Elementary, and Highlands Elementary. The board thanks you for your years of service, noting especially your efforts on the board HR and Teaching and Learning Committees. Sarah's been a thoughtful and dedicated board member. She's continually based her decisions on what's best for the students and the community. The board congratulates Sarah and extends a collective and individual thank you for a job well done. Thank you, Sarah. We do have at the seven o'clock time period for audience members to make comments to the school board. We ask that you not comment on individuals, or I should say, raise complaints about individuals. If you have complaints, you should bring those to the superintendent's attention. We do not typically respond to comments that are made at the meeting, but we will respond subsequent to the meeting. Tonight, we just have one speaker, and that's Wayne Wanger. Wayne, are you here?
Welcome. Well, it's a season for appreciation, and I just want to thank all of the school board members. I've been attending a lot of the meetings over the last two years, and I know how many times you've been here. Late at night, sometimes 1:00 a.m., Saturdays, weekends, going to schools. I mean, Sarah's list of meetings and committees and everything, and we've had the strategic plan on top of everything, which is your part of your normal duties. So you've put in a lot of time, and it's taken away from your jobs, your family, other commitments, and we appreciate all the work that you do and put in for this. And especially to Amir and Sarah, thank you all for all your efforts.
Thank you. Next, we have the truth and taxation hearing. John Top is up.
I can drive from here, John. Who wants?
Okay. Well, it's really hard to follow all of that with something as mundane as our truth and taxation hearing, but I will try and get through this very quickly for you. As the slides are up on the board, I'll just walk through them fairly quickly. Minnesota state law does require that we hold this public hearing for our taxes payable for 2020. We need to fulfill a few requirements on the left side as far as timing and so forth. We have to allow for public comments. And what do we present at the hearing? We'll be presenting current year budget, prior year actual revenue and expenditures, the proposed property tax levy increase, including the percentage increase, and then the specific reasons behind those increases. So this is what we publish in our newspaper, our legal publication. It shows our actual beginning balances in the general fund and our other various funds, followed by our revenues and transfers in for the 18-19 school year, actual expenditures and transfers out, and then what our actual fund balances are as reflected in our audit report that we approved on November 18th. A real good year for 18-19 for the district. If people are hearing this for the first time, our general fund other increased about $700,000. So that was good results for the district. And then what we're also required to report are the budgeted revenues and transfers in for 1920, and the budgeted expenditures and transfers out for 1920 as well. And this is the budget that the board approved in June of 2019. We are working on a revised budget that we'll be bringing forward to the board very shortly Go on to the next one. So this is our revenue for all funds, just showing the splits between general fund, food service, community service, building construction, and debt service on the revenue side, breaking out $153 million of revenue. You can see the general fund is our primary revenue source, generating about 78% of our $153 million in funds for 1920. And then the sources of revenue for the general fund, so out of that $115 million, we're now breaking down $116 million. About 67% or two-thirds of that comes from state sources. The property taxes, which we're talking about tonight, comprise about 29%. And then... The property taxes, which we're talking about tonight, comprise about 29%. And then other local revenue, fees and activity fees and so forth, about 3%. And very low 2 point, I'm sorry, 2% from federal sources. So this breaks down our 1920 original budget that was approved by the school board of $114.6 million into the various program areas. Obviously, regular instruction should comprise a good part of that. It's at 48.2%. Special education instruction is at 18.7%. Instructional support services is at about 5%. And pupil support services, which would include transportation, is at about 8.7%. And then you can see the various buildings and grounds up at the top left, 13%. District and school administration, 2.7%. And then district support services, like the business office, 2.5%. And we just have a small amount in fixed cost programs and about a half million dollars in vocational instruction. This, this graph shows the general fund expenditures by the lowest level of detail or by object code. So it tells you how we are spending our money on various areas in the district. Wages and salaries, 63% of the general fund, followed by benefits at 20.7, almost 21%. So about 83.4% of every dollar that we spend in the district is spent on salaries and benefits. Purchase services is the next highest one at about $7.8 million. That would be contracted bus services, for example. Instructional supplies, about $3.5 million or 3%. Capital expenditures to maintain our buildings, about 6.3%. And other expenditures at .4%. So overview of the proposed levy payable in 2020. This is an increase of 5.04%. It does include the decrease of about $418,000 from the levy that we approved in September on a preliminary basis. The reason for that is in October, the district refinanced some of its existing bonds. And the total savings from that refinancing was about $1.5 million over the next four levy cycles, beginning with the levy that the board will certify tonight. And also, state law requires that we explain reasons for major increases in levies and decreases in specific levies will also be explained. So if we go to the next slide, we'll start that. Voter approved operating referendum and local optional revenue. We're putting these two categories together because there was a legislative change that would want us to look at these together. So one of them's going down by $1,030,000 and one of them's going up by about $2.8 million. So a net change of $1,750,000. You can see the reason for change is they subtracted $300 per student from the voter approved operating referendum authority and added it to LOR formula, location or local optional revenue. And again, I want to make sure that the public understands that this is the second phase of the November 2017 vote, which increased our operating referendum for our pay 18 taxes and then now for our pay 20 taxes as well. The increased amount was $217.61 per student for the pay 20 levy. Go ahead, John. General and debt service for long-term facilities maintenance, that changed by $2,940,000. And then in the debt service fund, $741,000. Uses of these funds are facilities maintenance and obviously to pay off the debt on the bonds that we issue for long-term facilities maintenance. Those are based on our 10-year plan that the school board approves every Voter approved debt service went down by $1.2 million approximately. These are the annual required levies for payments on voter approved bonds, and those are coordinated with our other capital and debt levies. So we try and maintain a level tax rate for the taxpayers in the district. Reduction for debt excess is a little bit of a confusing item. It did go down by $772,000. For the debt service part of the property tax levy, we are required to levy at 105% of the principal and interest that's required to be paid to account for delinquencies. That excess, if delinquencies are very low, less than 5%, builds up over time. And then the state does a calculation that actually reduces our local property tax levy due to that debt excess that's built up. Just a couple of examples here on a $400,000 residential home and a $1 million residential home, also based on a 10.3% cumulative change in your property value from 2017 to 2020. If you look at the $400,000 home, that would be scheduled to have an increase of about $70 for this levy that the board will be certifying tonight. On the $1 million residential property, it would be $174 that it would go up by. And then I've got one more example, a couple more examples on the next slide. On a million and a half dollar property, that would go up by slightly less than $300. And on the $2 million commercial industrial property, we're looking at about a $374 annual increase. One of the things that the board needs to do is accept if, public comments, if there are any on, in the truth and taxation hearing, and then later on this evening, we'll certify the pay 2020 property tax levy. Are there any public comments? Usually, we have the government class here, and they have comments. Not tonight. All right.
John, does this, because of the two-step referendum, or excuse me, operating levy that we did, now we are at the cap, correct?
Yes, we are at the cap. And in fact, on the ballot, we put a cap amount in there, estimating it for inflation as well. And we are at that cap, yes.
Okay. And that is set by the legislature. And so beyond the cap, we cannot levy for more operating funds?
No, but the November 2017 vote did have an inflationary increase per year in it as well. So we will continue to get $50 approximately per student more due to that inflationary increase, and that's calculated by the state as well.
Yeah. I just wanted you to tell them that. Thank you.
So, John, the example you used of $70 increase on a $400,000 home, that will remain at that tax level after 2020. So it's going to, we're not going to be increasing.
It'll inch a little.
Other than the inflationary increase. Are you, are you asking those specifically, Director Michelson, about the operating referendum? Yes. Okay. So we've ceilinged out as far as that's concerned? We have, yes. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items people want to remove from the consent agenda? I'd like to pull off facilities fees adjustments. Okay. We'll move that to right after consent. Anything else to be removed? Otherwise, going to get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the facilities fees adjustments removed. Second. And roll call.
Yes.
Garby?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Michelson?
Yes.
Patzloff?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the 2020-21 facilities fees adjustments?
Sound moved.
Second. All right. And Owen, did you have questions about it?
I, I do. Val, a couple of things just to chat about. You and I have talked about this on and off for the last two years. This is dealing with the amounts that we charge for the use of our facilities. And we have four schedules, four classes. And we have Class A, which is those groups that are most affiliated with the schools, and it moves out from there. I'm seeing, because I focused so much last year in the tennis courts, they're $8. I didn't get a chance to look at this. But is this down from last year? Or are those figures consistent? Have these moved much?
We, when we came to the facilities and finance committee, both in the spring and then later this fall, we did a, we started out with changing our Class C and D, and we adjusted those to markets. So yes, some went down and some went up to be more in line with our other Lake partners. And then this time, we did the same sort of adjustment to Class A and B, which wasn't as significant, but we did adjust some fees. And then the second purpose was to get our facility fees on an annual basis in the fall, rather than do them in, later in the year, because that way we gave our partners preparation time for a typical January to December timeframe.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Am I answering your question?
Yes, you are. And I want to acknowledge that a good bit of work has gone into preparing this and supporting it and ministering it. I wanted to talk about it a little bit because as you and I have talked about off camera a number of times, and I want this to go on camera, that there is a dynamic tension with this because these are community assets. And just as we saw John speak to, we are taxed. We residents of the community are taxed for these facilities. Yet, we're also charged for the use of these facilities for groups such as scouts. And the parents are taxpayers, and yet they're taxed for it. And so having some skin in the game makes these groups a little bit more accountable to show up and make use of the facilities. And we do have custodial fees. We have heating and electricity. And so there are fees that go in. But I guess I just want the audience and the, and the residents of Edina to know that there's, there's a tension here, that there are voices that sometimes say, we should maybe do what we can to lower these quite a bit for groups that already have their, have members paying the taxes for them. And that this sort of creates a barrier to the use of the facilities. And we, we have worked out a number of things in the past with security guards for the use of some of the elementary schools. And you've been very accommodating with that.
Building needs, yeah.
And so I just want to acknowledge that. But if for nothing else, I, I want the community to know that behind the scenes, we've had discussions about this. So that's really as far as I wanted to go with it, fellow board members.
Okay.
Thank you, Owen.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hold up. So now we're going on to roll call vote for approval of the 2020-2021 facilities fees adjustments.
Ellen?
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Garby?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Patzloff?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. We are on to discussion. The first discussion item is the LAC's 2020 Legislative Platform. Ellen and Owen, this is yours.
Thanks. I'd like to call any member of the LAC is welcome to join Catherine up at the table here. It's a nine-member committee. And I'd like to introduce you to Catherine Gump, Sarah Hermata, Hermata, sorry, and Albert Tsai. And Catherine's actually going to lead the presentation. And I guess you, okay, so John's going to drive.
I'll try to read your mind.
Okay. Well, first, I want to say how pleased all of us are to represent the LAC in presenting our 2020 platform. And Ellen has been our chair, and Owen has been our vice chair this year. And the other members of our committee are Rick Bale, Cheryl Berry, Caroline Correa, Young Hyun Howe, and Marcy Karch. And this is the second year we've had our LAC in...
Ethland, too.
Ethland. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Forget Ethland.
Yeah, no. Ethland, yes. This is the second year we've had our LAC. And this year, in the spring of 2019, there was an open invitation to all community members who were interested. And we all have, so this is the nine members that were selected, and we have one-year terms. So while Superintendent John Schultz has not been a member of the committee, we've certainly benefited greatly from his assistance and the assistance of his team. So this evening, what we want to do is briefly discuss our process and activities of the committee over the past two years. We're just going to go over a quick list of our 2020 platform topics. And then we're going to review each topic. And if you've got questions, if there's more discussion, we'll go through those more slowly, just to make sure we're really capturing what the committee, what the board wants to do. And finally, we'll just discuss our intended next steps. So the 2019-20 LAC process really began with a foundation that was built in 2018-2019. We established our bylaws. We established a process for informational meetings and developing the platform. We conducted an educational-focused candidate questionnaire for our state legislators, and we published that in the Sun Current. We hosted a 2019 education legislative platform breakfast. And we were very fortunate to have a lot of community support for providing that breakfast, but for the whole Edina community and our local legislators to really present and discuss the Edina Public School 2019 Legislative Platform. And finally, we participated in the AMSD Edina School Board Day at the Capitol. When we get to the end, those are a lot of our next steps for this year as well. So this year, we got started very early in August, and we had an organizational meeting to set the topic and meeting calendar. And what we want to really identify is how much support we've gotten from the district in this. So John Toop met with us early on, along with John Schultz, to talk about the business services. In September, we had an outstanding meeting with our representatives. So Senator Melissa Franzen, Heather Edelson, Steve Elkins all attended, Scott Crumquist, the executive director of AMSD, and we also had Brian Bass, the assistant superintendent, participate. We've had Jeff Jorgensen talk about student support services. Randy Smalsel participated, helped us understand better the technology and learning. And then we've had many work sessions. This year, one thing that's been really helpful is, again, not only meeting early on with our legislators, because those are going to be our partners when we go forward with our proposals or our platform, but Heather Edelson came back again to work with us specifically on the special education. So we want to talk about that. I think we're very fortunate to have that kind of partnership early on right now. And again, today, we're here to present to you what our platform is or what we would propose the platform to be. So we have seven key areas this year. Stabilize education funding, strengthen and support our special education programs, improve the standardized testing and assessments, reduce our mandates, and increase local control in order to reach, to achieve, raise the achievement level of all of our students, ensure healthy, safe, and modern school facilities, increase and diversify the teacher workforce, and finally, close the achievement gap. So we're going to talk about these with, along each platform, but several of these really are in line with the AMSD. And so we don't need to go into a lot of detail on them. The first one, stabilize the education funding. Many of these platforms are what are in line with the AMSD. But we want to point out that where, with our levy, and Sarah, you really called on this, we've tagged that to rise with inflation. That is not the way our schools are supported from the state funding perspective. We've gotten, we got an increase in last year's, but it doesn't, it doesn't rise with inflation. So we've had this continuous gap in our costs, and we're not getting increases from the state funding. As we just saw, the state funding really makes up the majority of what, of where our revenue comes from. So we're proposing that the state general educational formula would track inflation. And we think that that would be a much better system for all of our schools across the state. It's not a, it's not a funding year, it's a policy year, but we think this helps set a, an important tone for the policy that we should have across the state. The other, the other perspectives, I think, are in line with what we supported last year, and certainly in line with AMSD. The second area, strengthening and supporting our special education programs. This is an area we really did quite a bit of work in. And I told you, we met with Heather Edelson on this as well. Some of the terms in this are new to me, so I want to go through them. I'm sure the school board's very familiar with it, but I don't know if the rest of us as a community are. So we'll talk a little bit about it. The first one is supporting the students who have IEPs or individual education programs to be able to benefit from the ADSIS intervention in areas not addressed on IEPs. This ADSIS is a new program to me. So it's the alternative delivery of specialized instructional services. And that provides supplement- And that provides supplemental academic or behavioral support for students in the general education environment in order to reduce the number of students going into special education programs. So students are determined to be eligible for ADSIS by scoring in the 40th percentile or below on the MAP or MCA tests. But if you're a student that has an IEP, then you are not eligible to receive any ADSIS service. So perhaps you have a student who has an IEP because they're receiving speech language services, but they may need math support as well because of the way they've tested. The way the program's set up currently, a family would have to make a decision. Do I want my student on the IEP to continue to receive that speech service, or do I want them to receive the math? Our proposal would say, this shouldn't be a decision that a family has to make. If you have an IEP but you need these ADSIS, you should be able to receive this as well. So that's our first proposal. And again, we've worked closely with Heather on this and hope it's something that you as a school board would want to put forward to the legislators. And the second one ties into that, is increase funding for the ADSIS program and base funding on the number of students eligible in the district. Right now, the funding for the ADSIS is capped at just over $1 million for fiscal year '20 for every eligible school district, regardless of size. But half of that money is actually provided by the state through special education funding, and the school district has to match those funds. So we want to remove the cap and increase the number of students that are eligible for that. So that's our second, the second part of that proposal. And finally, again, we know it's not a budget year, it's a policy year, but we think it's important for us to continue to say that we need to increase the special education funding to reduce the shortfalls in the important program. And again, that's in line with AMSD.
Sorry to interrupt. From a process perspective, would you like us to wait till the end for questions?
No, I think, again, because these topics are so individual, so if you have got questions on either of the first two, please go ahead.
I just had one quick comment about the ADSIS intervention system. I think one thing as well that, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for what you're lobbying for, but...
Well, we're kind of all in this together, so you're lobbying for this, too.
I think the 40% cutoff also is a frustration because you can have students that are at 41%, and they can't receive funding, or 42%. And so from a metric perspective, it would, I don't know if the, it would be interesting to have discussions around qualifications for the ADSIS program in general. And why is it set, like, who's set the magical 40% line that means if you're at a 41%, you're still not at proficiency?
Right.
So why are those students not eligible for any funding in addition to the fact that if you're dropping, if, if, let's say you are at 19%, but now you're at 39%, you can get funding, but what if a student was at 60%, now they're at 41%? It makes no logical sense that those two children shouldn't get funding, but only one of them has offered any funding for intervention from the state. And so it would just be interesting to have a conversation about who, the qualifications for the funding itself.
Okay.
You don't have to take any notes on that? But it was just a comment I wanted to make.
I was gonna suggest if you have an idea of how to word that, that'd be great.
Well, and because it's a policy year, so it's not a budgetary year, a lot of these will, will end up affecting budget, but I think on this one, I really liked how you're focusing in on that it's equal across the districts, when in reality, the number of kids served is very different. So maybe focusing in on language that actually looks at the population more than just the dollars. So that the dollars may stay the same in the, at the Capitol, but they're being given out appropriately to the districts that are larger versus those that are very small.
And we also are hopeful that if we can just get that elimination of the cap, that that would also help equalize that a little bit. So it'd follow the students and not the district sizes. And Eric, I just mean, ADSIS is still new to me, so I'm just not sure how to, how we would word that going back.
And it might not even be something you want to add to a bullet, but I think in general, I think the program itself, I think those are great bullets. I think the program itself could be looked at from a qualification, qualification perspective is the bottom line.
Anything else? That special education is such a critical part because, again, it's not the budget year, but we continue to have that cross-subsidy issue.
And as part of special education, are we talking at all about dyslexia?
We're gonna get to that.
I know you have a new advocate on the LAC.
Yeah, no, we have. We have several advocates, and we have some policy proposals later on. Okay, anything else on the special ed? Okay. So the next area is improving the standardized testing and assessments. And this is one that we've had a lot of passion around on the LAC area, that our first area is we think we should create a task force to study the standardized tests and make recommendations for changes to make Minnesota's system of standardized testing more meaningful, reliable, and useful. And you've certainly done a lot of the research on this, but right now, the Minnesota Department of Education is spending about $19.2 million on standardized tests. And according to a 2017 Legislative Auditor Report, the use of the test scores really at the local level varies. So we're spending a lot of money on it, but we're not always getting results across the state on it. So our recommendation is, the first is let's get the task force to really look at how this is being used, how much is being spent on it. So we're doing that on a statewide basis. But then we're also proposing that the school boards have the flexibility to use the MAP test, the ACT, in place of the MCA. So right now, federal law drives the use of standardized tests in Minnesota, and we have to meet federal test requirements just to receive federal grants. But the, while the federal Every Student Succeed Act affords the flexibility in choosing which standardized test to administer, Minnesota law requires the use of MCAs. So we, the federal law would allow us the flexibility, but right now, the Minnesota law requires the MCA. And we would like the state legislators to look at that and give the school board the flexibility to determine which test makes the most sense for our districts.
Would there be, would you recommend, though, that then the transparency that's available through MCAs are equally transparent through whether it's the ACT or the MAP? Because we'd have to get better access then to the ACT scores, and I know a lot of the MAP data, we, we don't have, I mean, our, our directors have, Director of Teaching and Learning has access to that, but the difference with the state, you know, an individual parent can go in and look at the results of a district. So we may want to have language in there that allows for access that would be similar. Otherwise, I could see where they'd gristle against that, even though MAP may be a superior resource than an MCA.
You'd be proposing adding some transparency language within that?
Yeah, because the thing that keeps it standardized and, of course, transparent is that it's state, and then you can go look at the data no matter who you are, whereas currently, we don't have access to that. So you'd have to have that equivalent, but I agree that these, particularly MAP, is a superior test.
So how does the rest of the board feel about that?
I'd like that. More visibility into the figures.
We'll be bringing, this is just for discussion this month, so then in, in a, in a month, we'll be bringing this forward. So I'd love to hear what your thoughts are if you want to add wording that would be... In these platform pieces, it's always good to be just vague enough because you never know what is going to be presented at the legislature. So vague enough and yet capture the essence of what we're trying to, to do.
So I, I would, I would always go the opposite route, where I like the first bullet. The second bullet makes me a little bit stressed because I would, I think we would have to do the first bullet first before we can, could recommend if we wanted to, like, for example, get rid of the MCA in favor of the MAP, because they measure two different things. And so to suggest the second bullet without knowing the first bullet gives me pause, whereas, so as opposed to adding more language to the second bullet, I would, I was going to suggest actually pulling back the language and maybe change it to allow school boards more flexibility in their standardized testing, instead of putting specific suggestions for what you would do since we haven't defined our recommendations for changes yet. Because then you also don't have, so then, to your point, Sarah, while ACT is not, the district doesn't even own that data. So then I, then it sort of brings all these questions as to, instead of having these hypothetical questions, if it's extremely vague, then that was just my suggestion, so.
Were those from AMSD?
Okay.
No.
Yeah, I think what Erica's saying makes sense, that if you're going to study something to determine what's best, then we shouldn't necessarily jump to recommend allowing us to use something that we haven't yet determined is best. And then the concept of availability of the data is mixing two different things. One is creating flexibility for the district to use a different test, and another is requiring disclosure. So like, MCA is available statewide. If Edina chooses to use MAP, I'm not sure that we would be pushing the state to require WIZETA to release its MAP data. Those are, they're different items in terms of, and I know your proposal doesn't include
No.
publishing the MAP, but I'm just saying that requiring the transparency as to data is problematic because it's now diving into other districts' data, not just ours.
Right. I was just suggesting that if we go down that road, they're gonna want some sort of transparency, but I would agree that just getting the task force going would be a big first step.
So stay with bullet point one.
Okay.
And, yeah, stay with one.
I think if you have one and three, it, the second one is almost implied because you're asking to reduce it and you want to study the test that will do. I think, I think those two are first, a great first step, and I can see bullet number two being an out, an outgrowth of what you study and maybe being in next year's platform. What do we really want to do and recommend?
Good. And again, I think, working with Heather, that she's very supportive of this task force proposal, that we wanted to give you as the school board the flexibility to support that you, if you, in fact, had wanted that kind of flexibility. So I think we, as the LAC group, are happy to go with the first and third bullets. Good. Any further conversation on that?
No, and I just want to say, I appreciate, this is clearly a ton of work, so don't take any of these comments as criticism. It's, it's outstanding work.
Good, thank you. The fourth area is reducing mandates and increasing local control in order to raise the achievement level of all students. So these are, many of these are from AMSD and along those lines. So rather than going through all of them, I wanted to get your thoughts on whether these are the right bullet points. So the first one is opposing any new unfunded mandates and reduce existing mandates and burden some paperwork requirements. Now, that is in alignment with AMSD. And then we thought regularly review the federal and state mandates to verify relevance and alignment with other policy goals. Fits, it follows that. Broaden the levy authority of school boards. That is because all other entities have the, have that ability to do levies, it's just school boards that have to go in front of the state to get that right. So we thought that would give, again, more local control. Align the continuing contract laws to the teacher tenure law to allow school boards and administrators more flexibility in retaining their most effective staff. And finally, allow locally-elected school boards to adopt the school calendar that best meets the needs of their communities.
Okay, that last one's a good one for a policy year.
Yeah.
Just, good luck on that one. The lobbyists will be out.
Okay.
Can you just explain the fourth bullet, the aligning the contract law?
John, why don't you help us with that a little bit?
Or Alan, or John, or somebody?
So I think that is, the, the law or the lobbying so that our, our youngest teachers can be retained as, as talent, as opposed to when we get into our budget cutting, that we would release them, that's really what that is saying.
So you mean, last in, first out?
Yeah.
And that law changed, but we would have to approve it with our local union, correct? Okay. So how is that affected at the legislature? Because isn't the law...
I don't, I don't know if, if that is completely law yet. I think there's still some, some tweaks to that law.
Oh.
I think it's to give more flexibility to, to boards.
Okay.
I can check between now and January to find out.
You don't have to get back to me.
I'll get back to you.
Well, one thing we'll check, though, too, is... I was confused, I thought that had passed, but only to the point where you had to negotiate it with your local union, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, yeah, and we have not negotiated that. But otherwise, the, that's why I was questioning bringing it to the legislature, because I thought that had already gone through.
It's more on a, it's a local level issue. Hello?
We'll double check it.
We'll look.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You can tell that's not one we're as familiar with. Okay, thank you. And then the last area, was it, were there any other, other questions on that one? Okay. And then our, our next area is ensure healthy, safe, and modern school facilities. And this one, again, all of, the first three are all in alignment with the AMSD platform, but the first is remove the per pupil limit and expand allowable uses of long-term facilities revenue to allow school districts to enhance safety through security modifications, remodeling, and additions to existing buildings. And I think that's pretty straightforward. The next, increase the Safe School Levy and expand the allowable uses to include mental health services for students, teachers, and staff, and enhance cybersecurity. And provide additional, provide access to additional support and services to address mental health. Additional funding is needed to add counselors, psychologists, and social workers in schools. And then we had also added, create a governor's task force to address the issue of teacher wellness. That was not in the AMSD, but what we're seeing is teachers are reporting a greater level of stress than ever before. We see them leaving the profession in record numbers. So we think trying to address that teacher wellness issue is important and should be included in this area.
Hi, I have a comment again.
Okay.
I, I love every single one of these recommendations, and I provided this feedback to AMSD as well last year.
Oh, good.
I really think it's important to disentangle mental health from safety and security in facilities because they don't belong together. And it, the implication is that there's a correlation between mental health issues and the safety and security of our buildings. And I think that even if you look at the bullet point, as opposed to recommending that the Safe Schools Levy is expanded to allow uses for mental health, I think it should be a completely different bullet point that says, we just need to increase mental health funding in our state. I don't know why it would actually be tied to...
So then, I think one of the things we've struggled with is how do you keep it in this, should we, is that an HHS idea, or is it education? So by having it under the Safe School levies, you keep it within the education and don't bring in the Health and Human Services?
Well, we get provided money for counselors, we get, I mean, there has to be a way that, whether, wherever it's funneled, but there has to be a way that we can be provided increased mental health funding without necessarily saying that we're doing it so we can improve the safety of our schools.
Right.
And if you have to do it that way, the message it sends bothers me.
Right.
And so my recommendation is that we create two different...
And so my recommendation is that we create two different slides. One is that we want to ensure healthy, safe, and modern school facilities, and the first two bullets would be under that. The second is, we want good mental health and wellness in our districts. And we talk about the last two bullet points and then increasing mental health funding in our school system. And so, and I know this is exactly how AMSD does it, so I'm not faulting you guys at all. It just, I brought this up, and I'll provide them the feedback again this year. It just, it's always bothered me, just the way it's paired together.
Erica, just to add to that, historically, the, that has been placed there because the school districts, AMSD, MSBA, have lobbied for increased levy, health and safety levies, and you're, I agree with-
Oh, no, I know they have, and I know it's the easiest way to do it and slot it in there. It just, it just bothers me from the message it sends about mental health.
Well, I'll just add that we had an extensive discussion about exactly this. And sort of for the sake of, I don't want to say convenience, but it was, it seemed like the most natural place amongst these without creating like 12 or 13, you know, separate areas. In fact, I think originally, this topic area was simply ensure safe and modern school facilities, and we added in the healthy part of it, trying to do it. But I think you're, I think we would all agree, you're right. And we did this with a number of other platform items where we feel that we improved the language from the AMSD language. But anyway, your point, I think, is well taken.
So would the school board like us? And Erica, I think your suggestion is a good one. So we can go back as a LAC and update our proposals and have a separate area of mental health? Is that what you, as a board, are asking us to do?
Well, and I think another thing is, and I think maybe we talked a little bit about this last year, but trying to better cooperate between Health and Human Services and Education because they are the two biggest pieces of the state budget. And yet, we're trying to pull from each other, but really, what we're talking about here, particularly with mental health, is just that, Health and Human Services.
Correct.
And so to feel like, like putting on the school system the burden of that without some cross-subsidy funding, as they like, you know, we really need to get them to think about it differently because it just pulls, and I'm sure John would probably agree, it just pulls money out of what we're, what our entity is supposed to be doing. So I think even, even language around something that talks about that these two entities need to work together on this issue and not just put it onto the schools.
It'd be interesting to have a bullet point about rethink, rethinking the financing to Sarah's point about have education work with Health and Human Services. And it would be really interesting to have some sort of bullet or lobbying around that. I can't come up with wording, but-
No, we can go back, though, and come back to the board in January with an update on that area.
Was the thought process, that it'd be more likely to be successful if it was within this category?
Yes. Because there's such a statewide discussion around safe schools.
So I'm all-
It'll get funded.
Right, I'm all for purity of thought, but I'm even more for accomplishment. And so, as much as I see the logic behind what Erica is saying, if the theory is you're more likely to get, be successful, then I'd leave it where it is.
And you could even maybe, like, separate it on the slide or something to delineate the two. I think there's some ways that it can-
Okay. And if you have a, maybe what we can follow up with you on, Erica, is just a better heading for it, because again, we've tried to improve it by adding the healthy.
You can also leave it as is, it's just a suggestion I had.
Okay.
And I don't want to create a ton more work for you guys, so.
Well, it may be just that bullet point number three covers it. So-
Yeah.
But the, the real reason is, I do, sometimes we will piggyback with AMSD because they know that this is where the legislators are going to fund, and they'll fund it into the safe schools levy. So that's why you want to call that out.
And you want to make sure it will be broad enough to do some of that mental health. Okay, we'll go back and talk about it. Our sixth area is increase and diversify the teacher workforce. Again, those are also AMSD platform ideas. Expand the programs and incentives to attract, develop, support, and retain teachers, particularly teachers of color and teachers in shortage area. And then we think it's important to maintain multiple pathways to licensure in the tiered licensing system. So we called that out as a separate area. And our last one is close the achievement gap. This is where we're getting to your, we've got a specific bullet point on this. So the first area is provide additional support and funding to extend learning to before and after-school programs and summer programs. We think that those extended learning opportunities really hold great promise in furthering the educational process, progress of students. But right now, our school districts really face a lot of funding restrictions in that area. So if we can offer more extended learning, we think that that would help close some of that opportunity gap. And our second bullet point is provide additional support and funding for identification and teacher training in dyslexia and basic literacy instruction. And we think teacher training and the identification and education of students with dyslexia and instruction in basic literacy skills are important really to creating an educational environment that supports students in critical learning areas. And we just need additional funding for that. And finally, increase school readiness funding to provide low-income and multilingual learners access to high-quality preschool programs that prepare them for kindergarten.
So-
That's it.
These all look great, and I appreciate the work. The question I have is, there are a lot of areas that you've covered here. Was there a discussion about whether having fewer areas might allow you to be more effective in accomplishing, you know, a greater percentage of them? And also, have you thought about, like, priorities? So as I look at this, these are all great, but I'm not sure we're going to get them all. And so should we be creating a narrower list and add lobbying for that and seeing if we can get others to create a similar narrow list to kind of create a groundswell of, here are like the top five things we want?
So AMSD's list is narrower than ours, so we've added a couple. But we also recognize that the first one on stabilized, stabilizing the education funding, we want to keep that on the list, but it's not a budget year. So I think it's important to keep calling that out every year for the student, for the students and the school districts. But it's probably not going to be a big focus area. Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, and I can, we did, we have talked about this quite a bit. One of the reasons why we expanded our platform this year was because we found, after tracking legislation last year, there were many items where we would have liked to say, yes, we want, we want preschool programs, but it wasn't on our platform last year. And we cannot, as a, as a legislative action committee, we only are advocating for what is approved by this board. So if it's not in the platform, then we are not going to be able to advise or lobby for items that we, we would want to. We, and, and the most interesting thing is that we never know what is going to be proposed. So, so the ability to advocate and jump on and lobby for good legislation is really important to us.
So then, it seems to me, though, you could still create a priority list. You could have this whole list approved, so that in the event legislation comes up in an area that's number 14 on our list, you would have the authority to pursue and advocate for it. But you would have, still have a top five that says, here are ones we're going to initiate on our own. So I just think that, I appreciate being able to support things that we didn't think in advance or weren't high priority, but they come up. But I still would like to see a priority of what you would take an affirmative lead on.
I was going to suggest maybe something along what Lenny said is that you maybe, like, last year, you had your, what was it, six items? You know, very clear, very to the point, and then, you know, come up with your own pretty language. But these are other issues that we feel are important to the district or important in education. Because I agree, you know, like, the funding for pre-K and things like that, that's great. But I think hitting on the, finding those five or six things that are most important to what Edina is focused on is really critical. And I think it would just give you that edge to say, these are the things we're pushing, and maybe focus on finding people who will actually sponsor bills.
I think we are in an advantaged position because we've already partnered with Heather on so much of this, and we've worked with her throughout the formation of our policy proposals. So we already know a couple areas where we're partnering with her and have her support and her plans to move forward with legislation, especially around the special education and then the task force looking at the testing. So she's, I believe, said she's moving forward with both of those, isn't she, Ellen?
Right, right. And so, so my, my reaction to this is, yes, we could do that. But whether our priorities are going to match what the board's priorities are, then would take a longer discussion. I mean, unless you guys want to tell us what your priorities are.
So it may be that we approve this in January, and that as we approve the strategic plan, that may create a priority within this set.
Right, okay. And Ellen, you're going to be more familiar with the timing on how we have to do the approvals. We are planning to do our legislative kickoff breakfast on January 21st. And so we're going to want to feel very comfortable with what our platform proposal is because we'll be presenting it to the public, as well as our legislators on that day. I just don't know the timing and how we make that a work.
Can I ask a question, Ellen, on your language on stabilized education funding? Bullet number two, I just wasn't, wasn't sure what you were going after on that one. Reject legislative proposals that divert money from public schools. What does that actually mean?
So that is very vaguely worded because there are proposals that will take money from Edina Public Schools. And, and there's a great number of them. One would be vouchers. Another would be, now I'm having a moment.
So it can take many forms. It can, the obligation of public school districts to pay the unreimbursed special education costs of district students attending private schools, including textbooks, counseling, cost of transporting district students to private schools. Legislative, legislative proposals to use public funds or tax benefits for private school tuition. Or a couple of years ago, when they took the school funding to pay off when, when we, there was a shortfall in the budget. So to me, that is the one that is top of mind.
Okay, so public schools, though, you're not honing in on, like, charter or things like that. This is, it sounds like it's primarily for misallocating funds and particularly like towards-
And again, we feel-
Non-public.
You, you-
It would cover-
Charter schools, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because charter schools are public.
That, what we're lobbying on behalf of is the Edina School District. So the public funds of the Edina School District. So that's what we're trying to protect.
I think that makes a lot of sense that you're, you know, we're operating on behalf of the district board here. I wouldn't want to say that we're, we're coming out to try to undo any charter legislation or anything.
No.
Or even any, yeah, right, any of this diversion. I totally support the, the public money for public schools idea. But, but they're public schools, too.
Uh huh. I think it, I know when we started this, we wanted to be very careful about politics. And so this was the only one where I think we just want to be careful and make sure we understand what we're focusing on because the, we, the, the, the potential of going after charter, I think, could be detrimental in your effort.
This is also on AMSD one, and so our backup legislation, or backup language is their language.
Okay.
And so it's essentially, Edina Public Schools favors using public funds to maintain and enhance the quality of Minnesota's public school system. And that's-
Okay, thank you.
That's what we're focused on.
That, that explains it better.
Yeah.
And do we pay for busing to private? Or only to the border? Right, because they're in our district. But we don't, John, we don't pay for busing only to the border, right?
Yeah, we get-
For a non-public school.
We get state aid for non-public transportation in, in a separate state aid.
Okay, thank you. In bus funding and all the stuff that we've talked about.
Okay. Good. Yep, and then our next steps. Our school board approval, our January 21st breakfast. Ellen, did you want to say something about the school board approval? Just looking at you, you look like you had a thought, okay.
No, I actually didn't.
Okay. And our breakfast is 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. in the Edina Community Center. January, February, we will continue to plan to educate the Edina Public School community about the legislative platform and ideally recruit legislative advocates for the Edina Public Schools. We already have, we would be happy to hand out badges to anyone that would like them to join us over at the Capitol. And from January to the end of the legislative season, we'll be tracking legislation and advocating for the legislative platform. And specifically on March 17th, we'll have Edina School Board AMSD Day at the Capitol. So those are our next steps.
Our buttons match the green.
I was going to say.
You could really wear your green proudly that day. Yes, yeah, that's true, perfect timing. Good. And that is our presentation.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you for your patience in listening to us.
All right, next we're on to policy updates. Amir.
Quite right, those up for discussion. Let's see, 528, minor change, I will note. We did have a discussion that included legal advice as to the, under the purpose, those grounds for protection, they list sex parental. We talked about whether gender or gender identity should go in there since we protect them under 413 harassment. However, because, again, we've had this conversation, because Minnesota Declaration of Human Rights defines those identities under the word sex, we'll leave it until the state changes its language, and then we and the other districts around us would all adopt the new changes at once. That was 528. 602, organization of school calendar and school day. I'll note that towards the bottom of the policy there, we have a couple of additions. One of them is e-learning days with a lot of information in the appendix. And also something noting that any changes in this student day schedule would go through the school board, which was just grabbed from the model policy of MSBA. And then the other three don't have anything of substance they reviewed, and it's time to renew them, so 605, 609, 623, here for your discussion.
So I noticed that we changed it from six months to 12 months on the calendar. That is huge.
Yeah.
I commend you. Are you good with that? Because we have not had that tradition in a very, well, ever since I've been on the board.
Right, it'll only be tonight that we know-
But I think it's a wonderful thing to give our community.
Next fall start.
Big leap. Well done.
Leap.
Yeah, literally.
I have two little comments. One is the, on the same policy, your addition C.
Oh, sorry, C.
Yeah, you need to change it to D.
Well, it's D, but it seems redundant because it says in A, it says the superintendent will be responsible for developing a school day schedule for each building's- will be responsible for developing a school day schedule for each building, subject to review by the school board. And then this says that this is subject for review and approval to the school board. So I was just wondering why that was added.
I'm never gonna answer, maybe we didn't.
And it, maybe you wanted to add approval? I, I wasn't sure.
Right, or some sort of-
But you, it seems like you, the, this, it could be, does whatever want, you wanted to add should be an A, since we're already talking about school board review in that area.
And my question was, what were you driving out with that? What was the purpose for wanting to add that language? Was it concern around school days changing without us knowing?
No, no.
And it, or was it an impetus?
Just reviewing the policy and comparing it with the model policy.
And then, oh, sorry.
We're on all the policies.
The C, the second C.
This came forward before we finished talking about it at the policy meeting. But I, so I, I'm looking at this thinking, we wanna change the, see the board approved Edina implement weather. That's in, in an appendix. And so normally, you wouldn't need that board approved language in there. It would just be C, the Edina implement weather, e-learning plan attached as appendix one.
I'm confused now.
I'm confused too.
Right, under learning days, so what Ellen's saying is we don't approve the appendix. And so if it's the appendix, all this should say is see the plan attached in the appendix one, that's all.
You approve the plan.
Right, but that's, it's an extraneous fact.
Right.
I mean, it's true, but it's just not necessary.
And then, and then, does that mean that we're gonna be changing, we're, we're gonna be approving anytime there's a cha, a little change in this appendix? Is that going to come back for board approval?
So it should be, board approved should be taken out?
Correct. Right, that's all.
And then I have a really nitpicky comment on the other policy. Is you updated the-
Actually, the board, the policy committee is not meeting again, so.
What?
This year.
Oh, oh. Well, it, in the body of it, you changed human resources manager to assistant superintendent. And I just wanted to note to you guys that in the appendix, at the very bottom, that needs to be changed as well. It says director of human resources, and that needs to be changed to assistant superintendent as well. That was it. That is critical. That's a critical comment.
All right, other questions on the policies? All right, let's move on to action items. The first action item is the 2021 and 2022 school calendars. Can I get a motion to approve the 2021 and 2122 grade 12 school calendars?
So moved?
Brian, you're up. And Randy.
Testing, okay. So since November 18th, we did meet with the committee on December 5th to review the suggestions from the board. We corrected the first semester end dates as Chair Wallen Friedman identified. And then we did review the spring break, uh, spring break dates. Director Patzloff encouraged us to look at. And so the spring break dates, the committee was pretty unanimous about honoring the feedback of our stakeholders and wanting to make sure that we were honoring the placement in each of the years honoring that feedback because it was split across those two, those two weeks. And so by honoring both of those weeks, we honor the input of the stakeholders. We also-
So you're saying that people didn't have, or the preference was 50/50?
Pretty much.
So this way you kind of, it's an every other year kind of thing?
Exactly.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. And then we also looked at the early release dates. There was a color there that just didn't seem to distinguish those days as much as other days that we had identified. And so we changed the color of the early release date so that that stands out more and it's easier to see. And then we changed the language for how parent teacher conferences was listed off to the right there in that other column from PST because we have problem solving teams. And so we just changed that to PT, parent teacher conferences because the PST was confusing to some of our stakeholders. So those were the changes that we, we made on December 5th. Any questions?
All right, so a roll call for approval of the calendars for 2020, 2021.
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, you're a little slow, Erica.
I know, I'm sorry. Since we are committing to do the calendar 12 months in advance, we, my assumption is we will be doing this process again next fall.
Correct, yes.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that. So that is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also wanted to rec, I wanted to acknowledge the members of the committee, and I don't know if that's possible, do that either before or after the vote, but I just wanted to recognize those, if that's okay?
Go for it.
Okay. So the members of the committee, Jana Kleinman, parent, Jill Thompson, parent, Patricia Fryer, teacher, Tony Wolfbauer, teacher, Jody Mati, teacher, Mike Protasky, assistant principal, Lisa Masika, principal, Mary Woody, communications, Randy Smazel, director of teaching and learning, Mark DeYoung, assistant principal, Rachel Hicks, community education, Gail Bowser, am I saying that right, Bowser? Bowser, uh, teacher, Jamie Young, teacher, Angela Harubi, teacher, Melissa Craig, parent, Kate Strand, early childhood, and myself. So those are all the members of the committee. Just wanted to make sure that we recognize and honor them as well this evening. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to a roll call for approval of the calendars.
Aye.
Garvey?
Yeah.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Edslaw?
Aye. Motion carried. Next. Can I get a motion to approve the, a contract with the teachers on call?
So moved?
Second. John, Brian?
I have the first part of this. Zach's gonna pull up the report that was provided to us by our sourcing agent Catalyst. So you'll see the report there. I'm sure you all have those as well. Yeah, if you could scroll up a little bit. So there, the process that was used, pause right there, Zach, perfect. The process that was used, Catalyst went out and requested, well, not requested, advertised a request for proposal. There were two vendors that submitted proposals, teacher ASAP and teachers on call. And the evaluation criteria that were, that, the criteria that was used included the ability to meet coverage needs of the district, the processes, operational invoicing reporting that clearly reduced workload on our current district staff, reputation and references of vendor strategy and processes in maintaining a strong pool of qualified substitutes for recruiting and qualifying, and then the total costs. All right, John was gonna talk through the numbers, but I will attempt to do that in his absence.
Well, actually, just to save you from that, we could read the numbers.
There you go.
So I don't think you really need to read that through.
Okay.
And we talked about this before. I, I have some questions, but I don't know if other people have questions. So after a certain time period, this can be cancelable on 30 days notice by either side. So the question, first question I have is that if they cancel it, does 30 days give you enough time to build or get ourselves ready for hiring our own subs?
Yes.
Okay, that was easy. There is a non-solicit in the contract. And so does that, I mean, I kinda noticed it, didn't read it very carefully, but does that preclude us from hiring any subs that they introduce us to or that we introduce them to?
So we are able to hire substitutes from teachers on call. Teachers on call does have a placement fee for newly recruited substitutes that have no prior connection to the district, requiring that they work 480 hours for teachers on call. Besides that, all substitutes working for the district may be hired at any time.
So if, if we have this, if, if they terminate or we terminate, so 30 days later comes, do we have to pay them anything if we hire any of these subs other than the sub fee? That's kind of the more complicated question.
Yes. Given the information that we have, I think if, if, if for, if teachers on call identified that candidate was a part of a candidate from their pool, we would have to pay a fee.
And so then we'll, we will have a list of people that we previously used that we'll sort of port over and we then won't have to pay a fee for. I'm just thinking of that if this contract ever gets terminated, what happens? You know, what's our options for hiring subs and are we incurring any additional costs?
Right, so the current subs that we use that are short-term subs, so not our super sub or our long-term subs, they are not a part of this. So these are our short-term substitute teachers that we use. So that group that we currently use will be rolled into the teachers on call system. And so that group would certainly still be there available to us for a short bench and then we would be able to hire and recruit other substitutes once we knew how many spots we needed to fill. Is that helpful?
So whoever we knew of prior to this contract, we would be, we could use at no cost post-contract.
Yes.
And anybody that they introduced us to during the term of the contract, we would then have to pay if we wanted to use them.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
So one of the drivers of this is to save money. And just to confirm, John, did I see $70,000 per year? Director Michelson, yes, you did. The first year will be $7,000 less though, because there is a one-time fee for implementation. So it'll be about $62,000 is what they're calculating for the savings in hard costs for the first year. Okay, good. It makes me think of Jack Welch's dictum that hire somebody else out to do your, your back office work when it's their front office. So their specialty is contract substitute teachers. So take some of the burden off of you, so it seems very prudent.
A quick question about the indemnification. Can you just really quickly walk through, for example, if there's a workman's comp claim, who orange, who pays for things like that? Since they're technically employees of this company and not us? It, I, the language was not very clear to me in the contract. Or if there is some sort of accident on school grounds, who would be liable? It's not clear to me where that liability lies.
Director Allenberg, the work comp would be required for teachers on call to have. That's state requirement and you're right, they're, they're their employees. So they are required to have workers' compensation, insurance. On the general and umbrella liability, they are saying what they will have for amounts. If there is an accident on our property and we're negligent, there might be some bleed over in a claim on that, but they have commercial general liability and a, and a big umbrella to cover some of that as well.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll proceed to a roll call on approving the substitute teacher contract, teachers on call contract.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Edslaw?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the final tax levy for 2019 payable 2020?
Second.
And John, this is what we previously had in our hearing, correct?
Yes. So I won't take a lot of time going over that. You have the presentation in the board packet, in the excerpts from the slides that we have for the critical evaluation during. The, are the first four slides there in the packet for the board. Then I have a graph that shows you 10 years of levy history for the district. I think as we spoke about before, a lot of the major increases coincide with voter approval of something. Then I do summarize each of the levy categories in the next two pages, so you can see each individual levy category. And then the last 40 or so pages of midnight reading is the actual property tax levy document. So again, a 5.04% increase is what we're asking the board to approve. 3.18% of that total is because of the increase in the voter-approved operating referendum second step.
So, so just to be clear, since we've got the voter-approved levy, what we're really asking for is a less than 2% increase beyond what's automatic.
That's correct, yes.
That is a really good distinction to make.
It is.
Less than 2% is a pretty good number for a levy increase.
Especially when you look at that chart that you have, which is lovely.
Yep, it's, it's a good, small levy increase over and above what we've approved by the voters. So I'd ask for the board's approval.
Any questions? All right, we'll proceed to a roll call on the approval of the tax levy certification for 2019 payable 2020.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Edslaw?
Aye.
Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the contract for asbestos removal at the community center?
Second.
John, you're up again? I think it's self-explanatory.
I think it is too. There was a little bit on the spreadsheet that I had Director Hamilton take a look at and it might've come up. You'll see a, a $500 amount. And then if you look way over on the right, you'll see a $400 amount on that asbestos bid, I think. And I asked him to check on that because it's not very often that you are bid, having a bid that goes down from one year to the next. And he did check on that. That was actually a mistake by the vendor, but they're gonna honor it. So.
And this bid comes in lower than what was estimated, correct?
Correct.
I think it says we've worked with them and so we're, we know them satisfied with their work, so that's good. All right, any questions? Otherwise, we'll proceed to a roll call on approving the asbestos removal contract.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Aye. Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Next, we're moving on to mechanical bids. And it looks like you've got a couple of different motions here. One is a rejection and the other is an approval. Am I reading that correctly?
Chair Wallen Friedman, we are asking that the board reject the bid for this fire suppression system. We're gonna rebid that out. Everything else would be as presented that we would ask you to approve.
All right, so we'll start by asking for a motion to reject the bid for the fire suppression system.
So moved?
Can I take it you're recommending rejection because it came in higher than you thought was reasonable?
Yes.
Any questions? We'll proceed to a roll call on approving the rejection of the bid for fire suppression.
Aye.
Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the contract bid submitted and attached for the 2020- 2020 Edina Community Center renovation?
So, second.
John?
Not, not a whole lot to add here. This is the first of two, two years' worth of projects here at the Edina Community Center. I know we've already had some movement happening, and the boardroom will be enclosed in that as well. And the bids did come in under on this as well, so we were pretty happy with the results, and hopefully that will result in some savings for the district.
And again, you're comfortable with the vendor?
Yes.
Any questions?
Well, I've never seen any photos of the renovation. I was wondering if you could share that with the board?
So, you want to see some photos, like when we're doing the renovation, Director Jones?
And what's happening? I mean, I don't, I'd like just to have a little more detail on exactly what's being renovated.
Do you have drawings or proposals? I think that's what she's looking for, plans.
Yeah, we can do a summary of what those plans are for the board, sure.
And is, I thought, because part of the renovations is the updates, but also, I believe you're going to renovate this, the boardroom?
Yes, boardroom is part of this process.
And I'm assuming the board, the new board will consult with the designers or something, correct?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
So, these are whiteboards for the classrooms, too?
No, that's the next one.
Oh, okay.
Other questions on the contracts? Otherwise, we'll proceed to roll call on approval of the contracts for the Edina Community Center renovation.
Aye.
Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Passa?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. So, John, I don't know whether the best way on any drawings you have, whether it's just to have them available for people to come in and review, or whether that's something you could email out. I just don't know the scope of it. So, if you just kind of talk to the other John, figure out the best way.
We can work with Wald and come up with something.
Yep, we'll, we'll talk with Wald.
I know they're still in process of doing some planning, so we'll time it right.
Yeah, we'll figure that out with Wald.
All right, next, can I get a motion to approve the purchase of elementary classroom interactive panels and AV upgrades? So moved.
Second.
Steve, you're up.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Schultz, Board Chair Wallen Friedman, and fellow board members. Tonight, this action item I bring forward is a continuation of our intentionality around life-cycle management for technology. Just like we are intentional about our use of technology, we have to be cognizant that technology has a life and when it needs to be replaced. This is a culmination of about a year and a half of work with the leadership, principals, teachers from every grade level and specialists, to identify the technology that we're going to use in a digital classroom going forward. We'll be moving away from ceiling projections into interactive panels that will go on the wall. It'll replace the smart boards and Promethean boards where they're at right now. And we feel that this will be a good process going forward. It'll be a two-year process, and it'll be able to upgrade the AV wiring in all the elementary classrooms, which is still VGA, not HDMI, and also put the panels in place. And I ask for your approval this evening.
Steve, does this come out of the tech levy?
Yes, it does. It's a great question, and so, we always knew that at some time, we're going to have to refresh the AV in our classrooms, and so this is part of that refresh from the 10-year tech levy. That does expire in 2021, and so this will be one of the final big projects through that tech levy.
Great, thank you.
What happens to the old technology, the old smart boards?
We're working with our catalyst sourcing to offer those per legislation to charter schools for money. And so, there will be a process where we'll collect those, put those in our surplus web store, and then charter schools and appropriate schools can bid on that and purchase it, so hopefully, it may bring down the price a little bit.
And so, these are essentially replacements, or are these new whiteboards for classrooms? Upgrades?
Yes, and so, just like in this, in this facility right here, in this room right here, we have an overhead projection system, and so that projection system will come down. And then, where we have a smart board that's at the front of the classroom, it'll be taken down and replaced with a 75-inch television, if you will, that has interactivity and wireless capabilities. So, it'll allow the teacher to present from their teaching desk, but then also be able to wirelessly connect, and then also provide opportunities for students to connect as well. Again, we're not suggesting that these are on all the time, and it's just when appropriate. But after working with teachers and, at every grade level and the specialists, these really did, they came out of above and beyond the most attractive for our teachers and the change in teaching styles.
Is there a training or an onboarding or short, how-to booklet, or something that teachers can get, and then maybe a check-in again six months later to see if they, if it was as easy as they thought, or share new ideas?
So, I appreciate you bringing that up. Sean Beaverson, who I think presented this fall when I did the technology update, we did mention that this was a plan going forward. And if this gets approved this evening, that'll be the next step. We'll be working with our operations to get it installed, but more importantly, working and developing an implementation plan. It will include training for our teaching staff.
Just one point of clarification. On the action item slash milestone portion, it says the task completion window is 6/1/19 to 6/26/19. Would that be 6/1/20 through June of 2022?
Yes.
Because would, or I wasn't sure if you were, if the task completion was from when you started the RFP process, so if you, it was, if you meant to start from 6/1/19? Or if it was the process for actually installing the smart boards themselves? Or not smart boards, sorry.
Oh, I see what you're, in the process timeline?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that is an error on that. It should be, it should go until 6/26/2020 on that.
6/26.
So, the task completion window should be 6/1/2, if it gets approved to do the installation, we'll start the installation in June. So, we're hoping to get ahead, because we're using this year's dollars to do the installation. And it will be, the first part will be done in a month for the AV wiring, not the installation of the projection systems. And then the next year, it'll be, again, the June of 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a year off.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And these, this is technology that the elementary teachers, they're on board with, having in the classroom?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, this is, that was one of our major criterias in this, was making sure that we're holding our teachers harmless in this process, because it is a big change. And so, a lot of teachers have been using smart boards and Promethean boards and using that interactivity, and that technology is actually, is starting to fail. And it's also that technology isn't necessarily still going to be supported by the companies. And so, we're working quickly to get this technology in place, so that we create a continuum of being able to leverage interactivity in the classroom by our teachers.
And on the average, how old are the Promethean boards?
Well, I'm happy to report that come January, I'll be here 10 years, and those boards preceded me. And so, they're over 10 years. I don't know how long, but they've been here for a while.
I'm just curious, but more than 10 is sufficient to answer. Are there other questions? All right, we'll proceed on a roll call on approval of the purchase of the elementary classroom interactive panels and AV upgrades.
Aye.
Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson? Aye.
Passa?
Aye.
Aye, and motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve Policies 532, 624, 711, and 720?
So, second.
Amir?
Yeah, so these are unchanged from a month ago.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll proceed to a roll call on approval of Policies 532, 624, 711, and 720.
Aye.
Garvey?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Passa?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We're, next is information, but Ellen, you had a question?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could move that to action.
So, tell me what you want to move to action and what it means to move it to action.
Enrollment report. So, I, I have a couple requests, or I'd like to make a couple motions with respect to the enrollment report, which would not be appropriate if it was just for information.
So, but if you're moving it to action, it still has to be for, I think, a particular purpose. You're just saying to me?
Right, do you want me to tell you what I'm, what I'm looking for?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is the first meeting that we are discussing the enrollment report. Well, actually, Sarah had mentioned this at the last meeting. And the reason that I'd like to move it to discussion is because the district has historically reported more detailed enrollment information than what is being provided in this monthly enrollment report. I recognize that the board will define what information we want on our data dashboard going forward, and it is entirely possible that the new proposed report that is being provided us might be sufficient. However, in the meantime, I think it's important, in the name of transparency and continuity, for us to continue to receive the old information, to receive all of the information that we used to historically receive. There, there are some major differences, including enrollment by grade, by school, differences with numbers withdrawing and numbers enrolling, and any prior year enrollment comparisons. So, it's quite an extensive amount of information that is not being provided in this new report. And since the board has long talked about creating this dashboard, I think that, that starting a new report right now doesn't seem to be such a good idea. And I would be just requesting that we continue our old report until the board decides on what the new dashboard would be.
So, you would like to bring a motion to add an action item, and that action item is to require the use of the old enrollment report? Is that?
Right, format.
Correct, well, not the old data. Okay, so that's your motion. Is, is there a second for this motion?
Second.
And, okay, so now we're at discussion of whether to require the old report. And what I would suggest is, since, I don't know why we've shifted to the new report, and I don't think that we told John that this was, John, that this was going to be a discussion item or an action item, so I don't know if he's prepared to address it. And so, I would look to John as to whether he's prepared to address it, and if he's not, which I'd be fine with, then I would simply put it on the agenda for the next month, so that we could have a discussion with John's participation. Did you follow that?
I can certainly respond to any questions the board members have on the, the format that I've put forth for the board. I certainly know that in the past, they've, they've gotten more detailed reports. This is the only report I'm really interested in. So, I can certainly provide that, and I think the enrollment office provided that before. We certainly can continue that if that's the board's wishes, to, to give that supplemental information.
So, I think, well, you, you were looking at enrollment from the budgetary point, and so, which school and how many left, how many came in, doesn't affect that. And then you might be having a different lens when you look at these numbers. Is that why you see this report as, as not meeting your need for information? It just, it's the detail difference, and I think, I had mentioned this, I can't remember, at some meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. And it was partially, the reason I had brought it up was partially for the public, too, because we did change the format from, from last, all the previous school years to, to your reporting, which I totally get your reporting, because it is financially based. I think the key difference, when the public is, what the public is used to seeing, was it was broken down by school, and then it had that nice little comparison year over year, so it'd say, you know, April 18 versus April 19. And it was just some data that helped us kind of look at, look at it from an overall perspective. But what I had mentioned was, is there a hybrid or something that we could do, since we did change the format? And I think for board members and then even for the public, just a way to better, to see the data in, in a way that helps them to look at some of those old things that they used to see, but still, you know, hits on the things that are important from, from your department, of course, as well.
Yeah, I think we certainly can at least put together some kind of more brief summary, if you want, if the board wants that, from the previous enrollment reports, which did provide quite a bit of detail. You know, obviously, as you well know, the, the net numbers here are reflected in the buildings themselves, and that's, I'm, I'm just showing the net numbers, you know, on, on the, what we get paid on. So, I certainly can do that if that's the board's wishes.
The reason that I'm asking is, we are going to be going through and deciding what types of data we would like to receive, and that's, we've, we've talked about that as part of the strategic plan. So, it doesn't seem to make sense for you to spend time creating a new report, but to just provide the, the other report until there's been some direction for change.
So, I think what he's saying is, this is what he needs from a financial perspective. And so, if we, from a board perspective, need a different report and would like more granularity of detail, then I think that's totally fine. I think that this is a discussion, though, that we need to probably get some more information about, because if, if, for example, if we go, if we have two reports, one is from the enrollment office, and then he's pulling information, there's a chance that some of those figures are not going to align. And then we get questions like, why doesn't this figure match with this figure? If we're going to ask him to add more information, then we should figure out exactly what information that we want and we find critical, that we need to see as a board. And so, I'm not saying that it's not valuable and we shouldn't get some of this information. I just think that if this is information that he needs, I, I don't, as a board, want to say, don't pull the information that you need to do your job. And then, to your point, if we're going to be deciding on, this is what we need to see, and this is what we need to elevate, and these are things that are critical to us doing our job as a board, I think we absolutely should be having that conversation. I, I don't know, I don't necessarily know if we need to flip-flop reports we're seeing at the monthly board meeting to have that conversation, but I think we do, it's a valuable conversation to have.
I think it's just this discussion of the two reports and, and what the information is used for, so, and it'll be obviously up to you guys, but I clearly see the difference between them.
So, is there additional work required to produce the other report?
Any report that I get, that I put into this report that you see tonight, is from the enrollment office. So, they've produced that report, you know, for many years before that. I don't see any issue with them producing that going forward. Like Director Allenberg said, though, if that's what the new board deems that they deem critical for that granularity that they want. So, maybe we do need to have a board discussion on exactly what parts of that old enrollment report you deem critical that you need to see. And I'd welcome that.
Okay, so the, the actual question is whether to add it to the agenda. That was actually, that's actually, that's the, we haven't voted yet on the motion to add it to the agenda. Correct, Sarah? We got a motion, we got a second. We actually didn't yet vote on adding it to the agenda. So, and I was trying to figure out, you know, pluses or minuses to adding it to the agenda before I brought that to a vote. So I don't know, I must, do people have questions about the concept of bringing it to the agenda? If not, we'll proceed to a roll call on the motion to add it to the agenda.
Procedurally, I, I know that we have to add it to the agenda before to take action on it. I would ask Ellen.
Right. Ellen wants us to get to a point where we approve an action item that says, give us the old report. Before we could do that action item, we actually have to amend the agenda to add that as a potential action item.
To add enrollment as the, as a action item on the agenda so that we can discuss it and come up with an appropriate motion. But my reason for changing it is that it, right now, it's just informational. The district has decided to change the reporting of enrollment. And I think that the board should talk about whether or not we want to just simply move ahead and continue taking this new report, or if we want the old report, or if.
Right.
Until we decide what report that we want, or maybe either way.
Should we just move that we talk about it then?
Yes.
That motion has, is before the board.
Yeah, yeah, that's already.
So should we just vote on that? Correct. That's, we're doing a roll call as to whether to add this as an agenda item to discuss tonight. You look quizzical, Erica.
I thought the motion was if we're going to vote to change the reports.
No, no, no. First, it's just to get it on to action.
The, the motion is to add it to the agenda to then dis.
Yeah, just call the vote.
Just to talk about it. Right.
Just call the vote.
That's it.
So it's just voting to make it an action.
You said action item, but you're wanting to move it to action as a discussion item?
Well, so Ellen has said both action and discussion, so it's a reasonable clarification.
Do you want it as a discussion point?
If it's moved to an action item, then we can discuss it and act on it. And even if the action is, we're going to move it to the next board meeting, that would be an action.
I don't know if you need to pass, excuse me, pass a motion, but to, to get it on to the next board meeting, I would think.
Yeah, can't we just discuss it as the next board?
Simple agreement.
Have a vote on that?
But it, it would be recorded that it will be on the next agenda where appropriate. Right?
Correct.
No?
Haven't we all discussed that this would be good to talk about? And we should talk about it?
Yes.
But there was no place on the agenda to do this conversation without it coming out like this.
Right.
Thank you, Ellen.
So my question is, do, are you comfortable with that, or do you feel that you need a formal motion to get some different type of action? Is my question.
I just want to talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay, okay. That's what I just wanted to clarify.
Next meeting.
So I think we're, I think we're done. But, but she has some, she has some motion on the table.
Right.
Yeah, sorry. We do have to vote it down.
Right. So do a roll call. We will not, right. Correct. Next time it will be on the agenda as a discussion item.
Sarah, was your motion to move it to action or move it to discussion?
You can, you can also.
Because if you move it to discussion.
I'm going to withdraw this motion.
There we go.
Oh.
All right. You made the comment.
If you, if you had liked it at discussion, we could have voted yes, and we did discuss it. And it would have been, been an icon on the agenda.
So, Lenny, can I make a comment about the enrollment numbers? As an information item? I've just been suspending my, it's just quick. I've noticed that it's, our numbers are down 34 students since October. And at $8,500 a head, that nets out to $289,000. And so we've lost that revenue in two months. So this is one of the reasons why I'm in favor of robust reporting on our exiting students. Because that's, that's a significant drop just in two months. So that's all I have to say.
Can I ask, we were going to be making, taking surveys. I was wondering if, when we're going to hear back on the, the surveys?
So we're in the process right now of, of completing those surveys. I could have something back in January, depending on the response rate of those respondents.
I thought we had talked at the October enrollment report meeting of seeing the revised survey. Because I thought there was talk of revising the survey for the newly leaving students. And then it was going to come back to the board so we could just see the questions before they went out. So it's already gone out?
Yep.
Is it the same survey?
You know, Mary is not here, so I'd have to check to see. We had that discussion, we had, we had a discussion with enrollment. And the questions that we gathered from that discussion, we included into the survey. So the discussion the board had, we included those, those questions in the survey to gain the information you were looking for. Yeah, you go ahead, Ryan.
Hi. Okay. So the feedback that was provided at the work session, drilling down to get into some of those specific areas of what about learner needs. So we did expand and stretch out some of those areas so that we could have some more specific wording in terms of what, what students were requesting in the area of learning needs. So we provided more space. But yes, that, that survey is now officially going out for students who are now exiting as of this month. So.
So will you, will we, so the students that we saw in the last survey were students that left in the previous school year, as I recall.
Yep.
So anybody who chose not to return this year, or has left, I guess, since the first day of school, are you reaching all of them?
That's the group we're targeting.
Okay. So it is anybody who didn't return plus any new leaves?
Right.
Okay.
And I have a friend who was surveyed, and she did, I asked her that specific question, and she said it was very specific about the specific reason that she left, that it targeted for her specific reason that she left. Because I asked because of that feedback. So I wanted to make sure, so.
Just a last thought on enrollment. Would it be good to attach this to a committee? Because then, like on this particular item, we, it would have been a little tick, like, oh, we should ask about that. Because I don't think it really has a set committee. I know what, you would think HR, but I don't know. So just a thought going forward. You might want to attach it to a committee.
Either like finance or teaching and learning, I think it's a good idea.
Something.
Okay. I do have a leadership update. It's as follows. On December 9, 2019, the school board met in closed session to conduct a mid-year informal evaluation of Superintendent Schultz. The purpose of the mid-year is to meet with the superintendent to highlight particular areas to focus on for the remainder of the school year and to recognize positive areas. It is not intended as a comprehensive evaluation. In general, the board's conclusion is that Superintendent Schultz has performed very well. Areas of exceptional work that were highlighted include Dr. Schultz's work with financial oversight of the district. He presented a budget to the board that met the goals of increasing the fund balance to an excess of 6% while preserving key programs. In addition, he again brought key stakeholders to respond to questions regarding budget cuts. Dr. Schultz's work in building relationships and collaborating continues to be an area of particular strength, whether it's with his own leadership team, parents, teachers, or interested community members. This strength is always valued and an important aspect of leadership. Dr. Schultz has proactively identified issues in the district that need to be improved and brought these to the board's attention. One example is the need to assess intervention services and recommend additional student services. The board also noted Dr. Schultz's leadership in improving district communications. The board did identify several areas for improvement. The board would like more involvement by Dr. Schultz in guiding the board. The board values Dr. Schultz's expertise as an educator and would like to hear his vision for our district and voice when in discussing important district initiatives. The board feels that Dr. Schultz should have a stronger voice and hand in helping manage large initiatives such as the strategic plan. The board would also like to have more consistency with data. As part of the evaluation, the board also discussed extending Dr. Schultz's contract. We will continue discussions on it in that area going forward. With that, we look forward to a successful completion of this year. Are there any committee updates? So I just have a couple additional comments. So I know earlier we recognized Amir and Sarah's tenure on the board, and I just want to add a few more short comments. I'll start with Amir. So Amir's been on the board for four years. And from the moment he chose to run, he brought new approaches and ideas to both campaigning and to serving. Once on the board, he brought a reflective approach that served the board well on numerous occasions. We will miss him on the school board. Sarah's next. She's been on the board for eight years. Sarah and I came onto the board at the same time. She has always brought great enthusiasm and energy to her work on behalf of the kids in the district. That's every single day for eight years, pretty amazing. I appreciate that enthusiasm as well as her work in improving board operations. We will miss Sarah on the board going forward. And we have completed our agenda.
I would just like to say, it's been an honor to serve with all of the members that I have served with over the time. And I'm thankful that the people of VDIN allowed me to do this. And I wish the district, which my kids are still in, and the new board, wonderful success in all that you will continue to do. And I just appreciate all the work that's going on in our district to better our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We have completed our agenda. Is there any objection to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.